So this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. The Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
Woody Knight?
Yes.
Mary Stone will not be with us tonight. We are expecting Scott Kinter. Martha, have you heard anything from Scott?
Um, uh, not really. She emailed a little while ago saying that he had completed his conflict of interest training, so he's all set to go and he has sworn in. But I haven't heard anything from him. I'll text him now.
All right, thanks. As for town staff, when I call your name, please respond. Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Uh, here.
Kristen Grubbs, Assistant Town Planner?
Here.
And anticipated speakers, William Henney, Henney Law?
He's here, he's muted.
Yeah, I see, I see him.
Good evening, thank you.
Okay, Michael McNiff, Bob Griffin?
Uh, Bob Griffin's here. Mike McNiff is expected here momentarily.
Okay. We're also expecting Steve Sawyer, but I understand he's going to be late. And also Mike DeSantis and Eric Bottomman, I don't see them here yet, but also anticipated speakers.
Yeah, Bill, do you know if they're coming, either Mike or Eric?
I do. I have not talked to Mike today, but I talked to Jeff Poyer, who is another attorney that's involved in it, and he told me that Mike was going to be on for the hearing and was prepared to speak to the board about the most recent work to the project and what's left outstanding.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. So this December 20th, 2023, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extends the Governor's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. It allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID number 83271413056, passcode 108790, or by calling 1-929-205609, and entering the meeting ID number and passcode when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom, and at www.tncTV.org, the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak, and if needed, share information with the screen. Please state your intentions after you've been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. Each speaker, after speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, question, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button, or on your phone, hit star six to toggle mute or unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. There will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raised hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on the phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant or participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your question. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column, and again, afford the participant applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record, and again, the participant applicant or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. And finally, please note that each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. And I see Scott, welcome. See, we have our newest member. Scott, you're muted. You can just acknowledge your...
Sorry for the mute. Thank you, Larry.
Well, welcome to your first meeting as a voting member of the board. We certainly are happy to have you with us. We do have a couple of public hearings on tonight, Scott, and because these were opened before you were appointed to the board, you won't be able to vote on any issues that come up regarding those public hearings, but you're certainly able to participate and ask questions and participate in the discussions.
Understood, thank you.
Okay. So the first item on the agenda is an A and R submission. William Henney, Henney Law, submission of A and R plan for proposed lot line change between 44 Fatholand Drive, map R18 Lot 54, and 42 Fatholand Drive, map R18 Lot 53. The owner applicant to 44 Fatholand Drive, Mercedes and Patrick Shea, and the owner of 42 Fatholand Drive, excuse me, Frances M. and Carol J. Orlandi. So Attorney Henney, we'll turn it to you.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bill Heaney. I'm a lawyer in Beverly. My office is at 86 Dodge Street. I am here tonight representing Mercedes and Patrick Shea. They have a relatively straightforward A and R plan before you that was put together by Kirk Benson from EPS, Engineering or Services. They've worked with Martha. There's been a few different renditions of this plan that have been submitted with more data being added to it. I believe that the plan that's before you does meet all the requirements for the town. I'm happy to run through it, but Martha, are you going to share the plan or should I be sharing?
Are you able to share it? Otherwise, I can pull it up. It'll take me a second to get it.
I think I can share it. Let me give it a try here and we'll see. Hopefully, I don't share a bunch of emails. I did hear the chairman's warning earlier.
Watch the family photos.
That's right. It says I need to create an accountant where to do that, Martha. What it's telling me.
I can see it.
Oh, you can't see it?
Yeah, we can see it. It's all blue, but we can see it.
Okay, but oh, this is the color plan. So do you see the green lines and the red lines?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, perfect. So I can't see it, but I can run you through it. So my clients are the Shays. They own Lot 54 in this plan. Can you see my mouse right now?
Yep.
Yes.
So this is the Shays' property. This is the Orlando's property over here. It's currently Lot 55, and it is 85,399 square feet. The Orlando's would like to transfer the area that's marked here. It's on the backside of the lot. It's hatched in red, 29, 2,976 square feet to the Shays. So the end result here is both lots will still be conforming, but the new lot sizes, the Shays' lot will go from being 40,056 square feet, they will become 43,032 square feet. The Orlando's lot will go from being 85,399 square feet to 85,000, or sorry, 82,423 square feet. Both lots remain conforming. The portion of the land back here that they're hoping to, the Shays are hoping to purchase from the Orlando's, is the back of the lot. It does not impact the setbacks. It does not impact the frontage. The wetlands have been put on the plan, so it does not seem to impact any environmentally sensitive areas. So for all intents and purposes, it does appear to be a very straightforward land swap that does need the A and R approval of the board. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on it. Now, I'll turn it over to the board.
Thank you. Pete, do you have any questions?
I, let me just, does Martha have anything to comment on this before the board?
Uh, no, as Bill noted, it's gone through several iterations and the information that we have requested has been put on the plans, including most recently, the approximate wetline outline of the wetland area. And that was largely because the upland changes slightly. It's slightly reduced with this lot line change, but still conforming.
Okay, great. I thank Martha. Larry, I don't have any questions. Thank you so much.
Okay, Woody, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Thanks, Larry.
Scott, do you have any questions?
Larry, I don't have any questions. I've been to the property a few weeks ago and just by chance spoke to one of the owners, and it looked good to me.
Yeah, I agree. It looks pretty straightforward. So would anyone care to make a motion to endorse, to approve and endorse the plan? Thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Thank you, Peter. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Pete, how do you vote?
Ah, yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, you're eligible to vote on this. So how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Is that anything else we need, Martha?
No, I think that's it. So we'll just need to arrange for you to sign the Mylar and the Form A, and then we'll get the Mylar back to Bill or whomever he designates.
Very good.
So, but that may take a few days, especially with the holidays.
That's all right, Martha. I'll send my son back to your office. He now knows where it is. I appreciate the help today.
He does, and he was very sweet.
Okay.
Thank you all very much, and happy holidays.
Oh, sorry, my clients were on the call.
Oh, okay.
I did not, I did not see them. So Mercedes and Pat were on the call from their vacation. So this is great.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, let's see, the next item on the agenda is the November 2023 financial report. Pull that together and I'll read that. We still have another minute to go before the public hearings anyway. So our November 2023 financial report, payroll and invoices authorized, payroll warrants, the planning director and assistant planner, PR 24-10 for the pay period ending 11/4/23, and the PR 24-11 for the pay period ending 11/18/23. And under planning board expenses, we have the Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad on 11/29/23. And we have just another minute before we can get into the public hearings. Oh, it's 7:15. So we have two concurrent public hearings on the agenda tonight. For 170 Orchard Street, map R20 Lot 43A, the owner applicant, the estate of Louis Bulgares, care of Diane Yurkovich, continued from 10/18/23. So we have the continued public hearing for the 170 Orchard Street subdivision. We also have the continued public hearing for the common driveway permit also for 170 Orchard Street. Now, as you all know, special permit requires four affirmative votes, and we only have three members present tonight who are eligible to vote on the special permit, so we don't have a quorum of members to go forward on the special permit. So I believe that I have the authority in view of the lack of a quorum to continue this. However, I'm going to hold off doing that until we talk about the subdivision public hearing. I don't want to go back all through the history of this thing. It's rather complicated, but there are only three members who are eligible to vote on the subdivision application. That's myself, Peter, and Woody. But we do have, and it only requires three affirmative votes to pass, unlike the special permit. So I think we might be able to take this opportunity to look at a first draft of the decision on the subdivision, and then once we, that will, I think, will require a further continuance. Once we've done that, then I can continue the special permit. So Martha, maybe you can, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
I know you have a decision. No, I'm just wondering actually whether you should continue the special permit hearing now, just to, you know, make it clear that that's not, that's not being open, that that's being continued.
Okay, well, let me, yeah, that's a good point. Let me ask the applicants, the thought was to continue the public hearing on the special permit until our meeting of January 17. Does that work for you?
Yes.
Yes, and would want to, I think, when the time comes, continue the public hearing on the subdivision to the same date. So I guess on my authority as Chair, in view of the lack of a quorum, I'm going to continue the common driveway special permit application public hearing until our January 17 meeting at 7:15 PM. Okay. So Martha, do you want to, do you have a draft decision on the subdivision you can share with us?
I do. So I think maybe, maybe if if you formally open the subdivision hearing.
I'm sorry, okay. Well, formally open the subdivision hearing. Thank you.
So I have this on my screen. Are you able to see it?
Yes, got the first page.
All right. Would you like me to make it a little larger?
It's fine with me. I don't know about anybody else.
You're with me. Looks good.
All right. So I'll just go through it briefly. The format follows the format that we've had before. So the first part is the project description, and that basically goes over the existing conditions and then what the applicant is proposing. There are a couple of blanks in here, which actually will also get addressed for the common driveway special permit, which is the length of the common driveway, but we can hold off on that. And do you want me to go into any detail on this, or?
No, I think you could just summarize it. I think we're all fairly familiar. All the voting members are fairly familiar with this project at this point.
Okay. So then the next section is the submitted materials and information, and obviously, this will be updated as the process gets finalized, and we have the final public hearing dates and all of that to plug in here, as well as any additional information that may be coming in. Then there's some information on a couple of sketches, the aerial plans and lotting plans that were submitted separately at a couple of points. Then the procedural history. And I'll just go down to number four. Going through this, it seemed like it would be clearest to note just the dates on which the hearings were actually held, as opposed to the ones to which it was, the hearing was continued and then not discussed. So that would be March 15, April 19, May 17, June 7, June 21, July 19, November 15, December 20, and then whatever hearing dates. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, those are the dates in which evidence was taken.
That's correct. That's correct.
Before we go on to the waivers, let me ask the board members, any questions or comments up to this point, Peter?
No, no comment.
Woody?
No, thanks, Larry.
Scott, I know this is all brand new to you, but is there anything you'd like to comment on?
No, I've reviewed all of the, I've reviewed this, and I've got no comment.
Very good, thank you. Yeah, you can go ahead, Martha. You want to talk about the waivers.
Right. So the waivers. The original waivers included a request to waive the requirement for street trees that that was actually changed, so street trees have been provided, so that's not included here. So we've got the waiver that the applicant requesting that the board waive the requirements for the environmental analysis. Our bylaw allows for that to be waived for subdivisions of five lots or fewer, and the board did agree that that was a reasonable waiver. The next one was 11721D, street location and alignment, requesting that the board waive the requirement for a 50-foot property, I'm sorry, for a 30-foot property line radius at the street intersection. And that's actually not possible because the property line meets the Orchard Street at 90 degrees. The next one, general layout and dimensions, is a request to waive the required minimum right-of-way of 53 feet and allow right-of-way of 50 feet for the first 202.93 feet of the cul-de-sac, because that's what the property width is. The next one is typical roadway cross-section, requesting that the board waive the requirement that the roadway be crowned in the middle with a swale and treats, street trees on both sides, and allow a portion of the roadway to be super elevated with swale and street trees on one side. And they're proposing to do that due to existing topography and to better manage the stormwater runoff. And then the final one is that the board waive the requirement for a sidewalk along one side of the street, and that's requested due to the small size and rural setting of the subdivision, and the fact that no sidewalks exist on Orchard Street to connect to. And the board did review those waivers and felt that they were justified.
Yes, thank you, Martha. Before Martha moves on, Peter, any, anything?
No questions, Larry, thanks.
Woody?
No questions, thanks, Larry.
Scott?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Martha, why don't you continue with the decision and conditions of approval?
All right. So conditions of approval, some of these are standard conditions, and some of them are specific to this project. Typically, we have prior to endorsement of the plan, the applicant needs to provide a reasonable performance guarantee for construction of ways and installation of services. We've discussed that briefly. I'm not sure that any agreement has been reached on that yet specifically. And also a requirement that the applicant should make reference to the conditions of approval on the plans, including the date contents and the vote of the board. Prior to start of clearing and construction, need to have a pre-construction meeting, including the developer, the contractor, boards review, engineer, planning director, and conservation agent, and a representative of Nibery DPW at a minimum. And we've got hours of construction laid out here, which is pretty standard for what we've done before. The next one is a little bit different. In the past, we have required the Declaration of Homeowners Trust and Declaration of Restrictive Covenants to be provided for review and approval prior to issuance of the first occupancy permit. We've had a couple of situations where we end up coming up against the deadline, so I think we had discussed at one point the possibility of changing this to be required prior to issuance of the building permit.
Yeah, we, as you said, Martha, we've had some issues, nothing to do with this applicant.
Right.
We have had some issues in the past with that. Where are we? Anyone, Martha, or Bob, or Michael, can tell me where I, are we with the, these documents? Have they been submitted to town council yet for review?
They haven't been submitted to town council yet. We have received the most recent drafts of those and are reviewing in-house, and then we'll submit to town council for review. You know, once it's clear that there aren't any sort of glaring issues that need to be addressed before they go to her.
Martha, we have one question, and we can hold it until you guys are done. If we have time, we can deal with it now.
No, why don't you go ahead, Bob?
So at our last meeting, there was a discussion about the difference between a performance bond and a covenant. And I think we wanted to use a covenant up until the point when we were ready to place the binder and start actually selling the lots, and is that still allowed under the provisions prior to, prior to start of construction?
Do you want to, Martha, or should I?
Yeah, I mean, that really needs to be in place before the board endorses the plan. So sort of by the end of the appeal period.
So the performance guarantee could be the covenant that we discussed?
Yeah, so it could be the covenant, and at some point, then it could be transferred over to a tripartite agreement or bond or deposit of cash or...
Okay, that sounds, that sounds perfect.
Yeah, the form of concern, the form of security is really up to you by statute.
Right.
One of the several enumerated forms in the statute.
I think we centered the whole, but they just wanted, excuse me, Martha, on the, right, the Declaration of Homes, like, we might have sent that early on. It was really a draft. And I think that's where we're going to put the covenant, I think, for that, wouldn't we?
Prior to endorsement of the plan.
Under that trust that we have to...
Oh, I was looking a little further up in the page.
I know, you were looking at security, but I checked down the way she was at. We are missing the, could you go up, please, Martha? I apologize. The other way, sorry.
Which way?
Right there, prior to building, construction, the homeowners trust, what I was saying was that we may have sent a draft to you a couple of months ago, and I know we have to update this. Is that where we put the covenant?
Uh, no. So there are basically two covenants, I think, that we're talking about. So, and Melissa did send me some updated drafts of the Homeowners Association and the Declaration of Trust.
Okay.
And restrictive covenants, although that doesn't include some of the things that we normally see in the covenant. So we're talking, there are covenants which basically talk about the subdivision and what the homeowners can and can't do, and that's kind of a sister document to the Declaration of Trust. The restrictive or performance covenant that we're talking about is performance guarantee is is a different covenant, and that really comes in up here under the prior to endorsement.
Okay.
So I can actually work with you to, we have a specific form which basically puts a covenant on on the lots, restricting your ability to either obtain a building permit or convey those lots. And they can be released one by one, or it really might be cleaner to do, as you were suggesting, and at the point where you're ready to start releasing them, release the entire covenant and replace it with a tripartite agreement or some, something else. But as Larry said, the form of security is up to you as the applicant.
Okay, okay.
That makes sense?
Yep, yes.
Okay, so I can actually put together a draft Form D for review, and there may be, it's pretty boilerplate, but sometimes there are specific conditions in it. For example, in this one, since we're talking about parcel A is being conveyed to a nonprofit land conservation organization, there could be a provision in the covenant allowing that conveyance, but still, you know, holding the building lots. So if that makes sense, we can, we can work on that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Shall I continue?
Please.
Okay. So the next one is prior to building occupancy. The road surface needs to be at least up to binder, and that's largely a public safety thing, and utilities need to be serving the structures in the subdivision need to be installed. We have a provision regarding the subdivision road that it needs to be installed in accordance with our subdivision rules and regs, and also that it will remain private in perpetuity, and the town shall assume no liability for it. uh, that it will remain private in perpetuity, and the town shall assume no liability for it. Uh, the next provision is regarding parcel A, so the um, approval is granted with the understanding that the parcel shown on the plan as parcel A shall be conveyed to a nonprofit land prop, land conservation organization. And that a perpetual agricultural access easement across lot four shown on the plan shall be granted to said nonprofit land conservation organization, and that the conveyance of parcel A shall include the right to pass and repass Summer Fields Way to access the agricultural easement. So, I, I, I think it would be, um, I have not reviewed that with the, the land conservation organization yet, I think it would be good for them to, to review that. And if anybody else has any comments on that language, please let me know.
Yeah, well, I, I, I think it makes sense, you really talked to Greenbelt about it.
Yep. Uh, the next provision is standard provision about snow removal and keeping the uh, the subdivision road clear, snow, rock and ledge removal. So this does allow using hydraulic hammers and similar equipment for rock and ledge removal, it also does have a provision to allow blasting um, in accordance with, you know, state regulations and obviously requiring all necessary permits. We had discussed maintaining that vegetated buffer between the property and the uh, properties on Pearson Drive, the backup to it. So I've included some language regarding that. Um, what I wasn't sure of was wha, whether, whether there was any, any um, need for provisions for screening between the property and 168 Orchard or 172 Orchard. So that's why that's highlighted in yellow.
My memory is from the last hearing that uh, you were in discussions with, with the abutters about, on that issue. Is my memory accurate on that?
Yeah, that's what I thought as well.
Uh, the fellow at 168 was fine with us paving his driveway, he didn't make any comment, I was going to put a fence up behind his yard, it's something I sort of verbally agreed with him. Uh, Jerry, the fellow on the left, I didn't get a chance to talk to him, I went over, I walked his property. I, I'm happy to do anything reasonable for him. It's a pretty, uh, well, beautiful trees and rock wall right in between us. I, I guess I don't know what he was sort of getting at, if he wanted me to plant a few more trees where there was an open cavity near his garage. We just didn't get into it, but I think if you've been out there, it's got some beautiful, I don't know what kind of trees they are up there, I guess it's on well, so... That sounds like a lot of nothing, how to be discussed, I'll get a response from him for the next meeting, Martha.
Good, thank you.
Okay, um, the easements.
Yeah, the next provision um, regarding easements. Uh, we have easements shown on the plan, um, but there, there are a lot of them, and I don't know if any specific language should be included. So we've got the utility easements, we've got drainage easements, we've got the easement for the benefit of 168 Orchard um, for his driveway to access over the subdivision road. The septic system easement on lot two for the benefit of lot four. The easement for the pocket wetland on lot four, and then the agricultural access easement. And some of these will be included, um, like the agricultural access easement will be included, referenced in the deed uh, for the conveyance of parcel A. And certainly shown on the, the plan, but I'm not sure about any, any easement language that may be needed.
Um, I, I don't know, this, this plan has an unusually large number of easements, I don't know if it's really necessary to list them all here, maybe we come up with some sort of generic language that uh, uh, you know, off the top of my head, I'm not coming up with anything, but uh, you know, just about uh, um... Well, let, let me step back for a second, uh, typically, do we have town council review these easements, these types of easements, Martha? I don't recall.
Um, sometimes yes, sometimes no, it hasn't been consistent, it depends on the complexity.
Yeah, I mean, we, 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 um, we could just put in some general language about uh, all easements as shown, or draft easement documents to be submitted to the planning board for review, something like that. I'm not sure that's, yeah, yeah, put it, put it in your note, don't take that verbatim. And maybe if, if you're talking with town council about um, uh, you know, the documents that, that she'll be reviewing, maybe you could even ask her for any suggestions she might have.
Okay. Alright, shall I go on?
The alternative would be just to uh, you know, to list all of the easements from the plan.
As you said, there are a lot of them.
There are a lot of them. Okay. Alright, so we need a little more work on that, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Um, the next one is our standard language about approvals from any other, you know, town and town agencies or boards and committees. And next one is also standard condition regarding um, any, any and all conditions placed on the project by the fire department. Board of Health, the applicant shall obtain any and all necessary approvals from the Board of Health under Title V for septic system installation. Uh, Conservation Commission approval. And this is the understanding that an order of conditions um, has actually been um, issued. I don't know if they're going to need to do any amendments because of changes have been made to the agricultural access easement, although I think the area is basically the same. Uh, the next one, lot grading plans, this was uh, suggested by Joe, as he has done on some of the other ones, is uh, to, to make sure that we get uh, grading plans for each of the individual lots as they're developed, just because of the complexity of the, the drainage here and the high water table and, and, and other things. Uh, the next one that I have highlighted are also ones that Joe had recommended. As the uh, stormwater management plan said that uh, test pits had done, been done in the area of the pocket wetland. Um, or, but not within, I'm sorry, sort of around the pocket wetland, but not within that specific location where the wetland is going to go, so he was suggesting that we have this condition about uh, doing test pits and having them witnessed prior to um, construction of the wetland. And then also making sure that areas identified in the stormwater report is qualifying perv, pervious areas remain as designed.
Um, so Martha, I got a couple of thoughts on these two items, if, if I could uh, interject for a moment.
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, um, so the, the pocket wetland uh, really isn't an infiltration structure. So I, I think I would just change the end of that to say, you know, suitability for wetland construction or pocket wetland construction. Uh, and, and verifying the soil conditions is fine, I got no problem with that, that part. And then the qualifying pervious areas, you know, when you have uh, somewhat, uh, I don't know, I'll, I'll say rural layout like we have here in the subdivision. Um, you know, the stormwater management standards allow you to take runoff from roofs and roadways and let it go into these, you know, relatively, um, you know, flat uh, pervious areas, so these are areas that will have lawn or, you know, some type of vegetative growth on it. And, and it basically says, you know, because it has so little impervious areas as compared to the size of the lots or the size of these areas, we don't have to provide structural stormwater management for it. So I can imagine a situation where a future homeowner might sit there and say, well, geez, you know, this is a large area of lawn, I want to put a pool in here, I want to put a pool, pool deck, or I want to do something different with my land. And I don't know that we should necessarily consider those qualifying pervious areas as sort of, you know, pervious areas in perpetuity, there's a lot of ways to manage stormwater runoff on a, on a lot, and, you know, we shouldn't, we should allow the future homeowner, it seems to me, to uh, you know, do new calculations or, you know, come up with more structural ways of managing their stormwater. Uh, all in, all in ways that are compliant with stormwater management guidelines, but we shouldn't be necessarily locked into the guidelines that were chosen by me at this time uh, for the future, it seems.
So do you have any, any suggestions on, on revised language or something that we might run by Joe?
Well, I, I, I could probably suggest uh, some, you know, sentence or two, but something along the lines that says that, you know, um, if uh, if, you know, uses of these qualifying pervious areas uh, or for other purposes are proposed, you know, submission of new uh, calculations demonstrating compliance with stormwater management guidelines, uh, you know, shall be uh, submitted, uh, you know, prior to the new construction or something like that.
Uh, submitted to who? Uh?
To the planning? Planning board or the planning board's agent or something like that?
Yeah, because I mean, what, what you're proposing could be years down the road, what you're, what you're suggesting.
Yeah, and, and the guidelines could even be significantly different by the time this happens, but I, you know, I, I, I think that if we don't have this, they won't have the ability to, um, you know, uh, adjust their lot in the future or adapt to new technologies that might become available in the future.
Okay, um, maybe what you want to do, is Martha suggested, is um, uh, it, it just give us some suggested language, we can, we can run by Joe, see, see if he's happy with it.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Martha?
I think so. I certainly don't want to make a decision on that right, right here, since...
Right, right.
I would think those kind of um, conditions, if you will, I'm not sure that's the right word, but could also be included in the Homeowners Association documents, so it clarifies in multiple places that a future owner might see what the process would be for that kind of a change in land use. Um, and there'd be some kind of, again, process kind of laid out to make sure that the um, building permit requires that the stormwater management be, you know, reviewed and approved, something like that.
Yeah, that makes sense, because the homeowner is probably never going to see this.
That's true.
Yeah, tie, yeah, tying it to the Homeowners Association.
But, but this should be clarity on reviewed and approved by whom. Okay, so somebody's going to go to the building department, uh, you know, look to um, apply for a permit, building permit for a pool, uh, in this case, or this example. Um, at the end of the day, it should be, um, you know, on a pool by whom. And I think the planning board uh, is appropriate for the store, stormwater management. Or it could be conservation.
Yeah, I think that, a lot of this lot is not in conservation jurisdiction, but um, so maybe starting with the planning board, this seems to me to make more sense.
Yeah, it's an interesting one, because this is a project which is being approved by the planning board, but the, the conservation agent is actually the stormwater permitting authority in town. But, but I, I, I think in, in this case, probably it would make sense to have it come back to the planning board, since this is as you say, outside of the, it's, it's a project that's being approved by the planning board and outside of the CONCOM's jurisdiction.
Okay, would, would need to have, uh, there'd need to be some sort of peer review then. Uh, maybe it could be done in-house with the conservation agent, I don't know. Uh, but yeah, I think that, that this language is going to need a little bit of work.
And then I think it's a good idea, whatever language we settle on, to then bring that back into the, the uh, homeowners declaration of trust.
Yeah. Hey, are we ready to move on?
I think so. Bobby, all set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, the next item is our standard language about post-construction plans. Uh, one thing that we don't have here, although it's in the subdivision, rules and regs, is uh, submission of interim plans, maybe that's something that should be added here as well.
I'm sorry, Martha, could you repeat that?
I'm sorry, we don't have, um, this talks about post-construction plans, but we actually have a requirement in the, in the rules and regs about submitting interim plans.
Okay.
So I'm wondering, maybe that should be included in this as well, I'm just going to make a note of that. Uh, the next one is about in, inspections by the planning board's agent. Requirement for the plan to be recorded, process for modification, um, and then lapse, total lapse in two years unless substantial use is not commenced.
Okay. Thank you, Martha.
You're welcome. Is it missing any?
I'm sorry, I keep speaking over you, what were you going to say?
No, that's okay, so I'm just wondering if, if, um, if there's anything that's missing.
I don't know, uh, Peter, you see anything?
I know, I don't at this time, thanks.
Woody? Woody with us?
Oh, he seems, he seems to have stepped away.
Oh, okay. Scott, anything you'd like to add?
Um, just a couple of things, if we could just go back to uh, D2. Maybe it's uh, maybe it's E2. Yeah, on the utilities?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, if this, this might need a little bit more clarification, um, how it reads is that um, you know, all the utility serving structures, which is sort of by the subdivision road, um, you know, need to be really complete, and so, you know, prior to uh, really occupancy permits, if, let's say we got a couple of houses, you know, being built out there, um, and then the other two uh, are delayed, it just seems to me that um, this just needs a little bit more tightened up um, on the language with respect to um, really the utilities. So, uh, uh, does, does that mean, could we, utilities may be roped into the lot, um, um, you know, over the lot line, whether it's um, you know, dry or wet utilities or or, or something, because the way this reads, um, you know, before you can issue, you know, the first occupancy, really all the utilities need to be um, you know, completed serving the structures, and if there really aren't any other structures, you know, um, ready for utility, you know, tie-ins, we might have an issue.
Yeah, I, I think the intention really is that it's in all the utilities and the, and the right-of-way, sort of carried up to the lot lines and uh, for any structures that are existing, they need to be served with utilities, but um, I, I see your point. Not quite sure, if you want to put together a suggestion and send it, we can...
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I could do that, uh, I, I think it's pretty simple. I think the intent is uh, we all understand that, but we just don't want to get bogged down by, you know, uh, at some point in the future, just on some, some language in the uh, in the decision. The only thing I, the only other thing I have is, we did talk about the screening, um, you know, with the abutters, um, you know, if, if that's going to come back to us, um, maybe it should come back to us, you know, in a maybe a letter, um, you know, from the abutters to us, uh, letting us know that uh, you know, they've reviewed the plan, they've met with... uh, letting us know that, uh, you know, they've reviewed the plan, they've met with the, uh, the applicant, and uh they've agreed on, on whatever uh needs to be agreed, uh, you know, to, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, ideally, there would be, you know, some agreement before this is actually buttoned up, if, if Michael's able to go and talk to the abutters, and there's some, some agreement, then that can be, you know, shown on the plan, or Scott, as you suggest, um, kind of um, memorialized in a letter of some sort, which we've done before on previous, uh, previous subdivisions.
Perfect, that's, that's, that's all, that's all I have.
Good, thank you. Uh, Woody, anything, uh, questions or comments you have?
No, I don't have any questions or comments, uh, but I agree with the, um, what Scott had to say about the one sixty-eight and one seventy-two.
Okay, well, that, that, so, yeah, I think, I think we got a little work to do, but uh, um, Martha, do we have any members of the public with questions or comments?
I don't see anybody with a raised hand.
Okay, and uh, Bob or Michael, anything you wanted to add at this point?
Uh, no, thank you for getting us this document earlier today. I do have some uh information to fill in the blanks in the first part, Martha, which I'll send you tomorrow. Thank you all.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so Martha, I, I, you have what you need to at least proceed further with the um drafting the decision?
Uh, yes, yeah, with the, the kind of pending things that we just talked about, but yes, I think certainly we'll be able to have it in shape for the next session. I'm gonna take that down now.
And the seventeenth makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah, I know that the applicant has granted an extension up to February twenty-eighth for the, for the decision. So that, all of that said, um, unless anyone has any questions, I think we, we all understand, well, we always still get some legal documents to review, and we've got some more work to do on the decision. Um, and hopefully we'll have four members on the seventeenth, and we can address the uh, uh, any issues with the uh, um special permit. Uh, would anyone care to make a motion to continue the subdivision public hearing until January seventeenth um at the seven fifteen uh PM?
Sub moved.
Thank you, Peter. And I remind everyone, only Peter, Woody and I are eligible to vote on this. Um, so we have a second from Woody, thank you. Any discussion? Uh, he- hearing on, Peter, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so we'll see you on the seventeenth.
Thank you all, Merry Christmas.
I appreciate your patience with this. It's been a, been a long while, but uh, we're getting there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
The next public hearing. Actually, I think, the, the next public hearing, the bittersweet, which is actually not, not in what is on the agenda, I didn't note the continuance.
Oh, yeah, well, uh, we don't have a quorum for that either, since it's a special permit. Um, so the same thing, uh, we'll have to continue this. Uh, we, we did have a request for continuance from the applicant anyway. Um, so uh, within the lack, uh, given the lack of a, a quorum, that is, uh, for necessary affirmative votes. Um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna try this again. Four voting members being present. Uh, I'm just gonna uh continue this until uh, the seventeenth, Martha?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, continue the uh, public hearing on Bittersweet Lane uh, until uh, January, uh, January seventeenth meeting at seven fifteen PM via Zoom. Okay. Bear with me. Um, the next item is under old business, uh, it's one oh five, um, High Roads, uh, Seagate OSRD. Um, I think, uh, oh, Steve Sawyer is with us.
Yeah, I did, I, I got out the other meeting earlier than expected, so I am here.
So, um, there were several, um, uh, requested minor changes that the board went over last time, and I think the only issue in contention was the um uh, screening or the vegetation, I'm sorry, just bear with me. Yeah, was the removal and replacement of the trees along the property line between unit nine and one oh seven High Road, uh, which were identified on the OSRD site plan as existing to remain. Um, and I understand we have, uh, um, some new information on that, Steve?
Yeah, I just got a plan, well, so, um, Maggie and uh Ben sent me a plan today, which I forwarded regarding the screening, um. I, I, I did forward it off to Martha, upon looking at it, I'm not sure, I typically, I would think those trees should be native, I, I, I think the requirement's native, and it doesn't appear that they're native. One is native to China, and the other's native to Serbia, so.
Right, and in addition, the uh, the Bradford pear is uh, has been declared by some states or put on the prohibited list because it is considered an invasive and will be in Massachusetts in August, so I think we want to look at something else.
We may, yeah, we may want to, I do like the sizes, they're talking two and a half inch caliper on the deciduous in eight to ten on the evergreen, which I, I like where they're heading with at least the size of trees, but I don't understand the um, the, the species, so I didn't actually, I, I got it later in the day and I didn't get a chance to respond to them, but so that's something that we need to finalize, and, you know, I, I, I don't know if it'd be conditioned as far as a minor amendment that a, a tree species approval and size with the planning department in the, um, with the department and the board, um, that is, it could be conditioned on the minor mod, or if, if we need to finalize that planting plan prior, eh, either way, um, and then I did, I think the other item was rectifying the property line, where the fence, the abutters fences, seven feet or so at the corner, you know, in that corner of um, unit nine. And after lengthy discussions with Maggie, it, and actually Matt Gaines, they were trying to understand why it needed to re- to be rectified, so well, why don't we just leave it be? I explained Peter's concern that, okay, if someone buys unit nine and that, hey, I own that land, that's in my exclusive use, and they go knock the fence down, there's a contention there, so it should be rectified prior to the conveyance, and Matt understood, so it sounds as if they're gonna reach, they are gonna reach out to the abutter um, at uh, one oh seven High and look at providing an easement instead of, say, okay, the fence is there, we're gonna leave the fence, and there'll be a, it's basically a triangular piece of easement that they have access and rights to. Um, versus, instead of trying to do an A and R, I don't think we want to go down the A and R route, it's much simpler to just do a a um, exclusive use easement for one oh seven at that location. So that's it, that's the direction they're heading, and I don't know if, I don't know if those two items are tied to this minor amendment final approval, or if it'd be, just be conditioned, um, you know, I think the the, the land ownership can definitely be conditioned to the, prior to the conveyance of unit nine, uh, or as far as a easement requirement, have it recorded prior to the conveyance of unit nine. Um, and as far as the planting, I'm not sure how, I'd leave it to the discretion of the board, how they'd like to handle it, handle it as far as the species and such, I do, I, I do agree with the robust planting size where it's a two and a half inch caliper, it's not an insignificant tree, and a eight to ten foot um, evergreen is, is a good size, um, for the top of that wall. Um, so that's, I think I, Martha, you can, if there's anything else I'm missing, I think those were the two items that you, that the board was concerned, their concerns with the site visit, and as far as the removal of those trees.
Yeah, I think those were two, the two major issues. I guess my question on the fence, if I may go back to that, it's just so there's no, no thought about trying to actually convince the owners of one oh seven to move it back to the property line? I think the concern that the board was expressing last time is with the fence there, and the way the, the retaining wall is, is being moved back, there's not a whole lot of room in there actually for
Yeah.
you know, planting.
Um, well, yeah, I, I think once you get the plant, you know, the plants, if you, you know, you plant them up tight to the fence, we should be okay, um. I, you know, I can reach back out to them, you know, I, I, I know they haven't, they haven't started a dialogue yet with the neighbor. Um, and I believe that they're looking to do that soon, so, um, maybe that's something that, you know, if that, if, that's something they can broach with the neighbor, said, okay, would you, we'd replace the, you know, as far as, they'd replace the fence and replant at the property line location. Um, if that, if, if that's something that the board be more comfortable with. I think they're just trying to look for the path of, you know, trying, trying to take the path of least resistance with the neighbor. Um, I don't think there's been many discussions between, you know, as far as ongoing construction. I don't believe there's been any complaints from them regarding construction, maybe, I don't, Martha, maybe they have reached out to you, but I don't think there's been any interaction between them and the development team and the construction team over the past year and a half or two, you know, during construction.
Yeah, I, I haven't heard any, anything from, from them regarding any, any concerns regarding the construction.
Yeah. Um, so that, you know, I guess that's something I can reach back out to, you know, between now, you know, I think it sounds like this is something that we probably, they you know, it's been a month or so, they probably should have put a little more effort into uh, charging forward with the neighbors in, in coming up, you know, with, with an amicable resolution of how they want to handle that, um. And they probably should even say that, notify them that, hey, by the way, these trees are coming down, um, which they have not told the neighbors the trees are coming down, granted they're on their property, uh, but I think it would help to have a dialogue and come up with an amicable solution between the two, where it's on the boundary, so it sounds as if it's, this is something that's gonna have to be, um, to figure out, you know, we'll have to additional dialogue and and um with the neighbor.
Uh, yeah, I think we're gonna have to have you back on this, Peter.
Yeah.
Any thoughts?
I, I'm in agreement with Steve.
Yeah.
If they, it's in their court to resolve this right now.
Yeah. The one, one item that may, it, it, you know, interior, it sounds as if there's no issues with it, if the, I guess, what's that unit, um, was it unit three, the pool? Um, it would be helpful, I'm not, you know, I think they'd be hoping to move forward with the construction of the pool at unit two, at unit three. Um, it sounds as if that's amicable to the board, that it's gonna be an approved item, is that something that they could move forward with? Um, I guess at risk, I guess, it would be at risk in case something happened.
Larry, am I mistaken, but it's not our call, right?
Oh, as to whether or not they move forward?
Right.
No, I mean, you, I, I mean, I, I think you probably have the sense from the board
Yeah.
that, that where we're at on this, eh?
Yeah.
My memory is the only issue was around the plantings and the fence.
Yeah, that, that fence is the most contentious, it would, it, it potentially the most, you know, that most contentious issue possible with the neighbor too, so that's something that probably should, there, there should be some consensus before they go in there, and they come in there with a tree cutter and all of a sudden the trees are gone.
Yeah, I, I mean, even if we were to separate those issues out, I don't think we're prepared to
Yeah.
get a decision tonight anyway.
Anyway, yeah.
So, um, yeah, anything, Zed, to answer your question, Pete?
Yep, I'm good, thanks.
Uh, Woody, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I disagree with everything that's been said, communication with the neighbors is key.
Yeah, and Scott, anything you want to add?
Uh, I'm in agreement with Peter, uh, I think the impetus is on, on Maggie and Ben to get with the neighbor.
Okay, um, this is not a public hearing, so I don't know that we necessarily need to continue this to a date certain, but would you prefer to do that, Martha, or you just want to, want you to touch bases with Steve and get it on whenever it's uh convenient to all the parties?
Yeah, I think, Steve, you can just keep us posted on, on the progress and, and uh, get us, get us plans as you can, and tentatively, we could, we could put you on the seventeenth agenda, but if it's not ready, then
Okay.
it may be a little longer.
Sounds good.
Very good, thank you, Steve.
All right, all right, everyone, have a great Christmas.
Good holiday, Steve.
Yeah, thank you, have a good holiday, yeah.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, potential zoning amendments for the spring twenty twenty-four annual town meeting. So Martha, I think you have a revised schedule for us?
I do. And there are a couple of revisions, uh, since I sent it to you, um, based on some feedback from Tracy this afternoon. So, um, are you able to see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
So town, town meeting date has been confirmed for April thirtieth. The warrant is gonna be posted in Town Hall no later than, um, April tenth. The select board will approve and sign the town meeting warrant on April ninth. The previous schedule had the select board and finance committee reviewing and approving the town meeting warrant in February. Uh, Tracy has now set that date as, um, March twelfth. So, kind of then hopping up to the beginning, that gives us a little bit, a two, two-week more leeway than we had prior, so looking at, uh, voting to submit the zoning amendments to the select board and set the public hearing date, um, on January seventeenth, so that would be the second, well, the, the, uh, what would be our second meeting in January. Um, and submit the proposed draft language to the select board on the eighteenth, after the board takes that vote, but we'd have to alert them to the fact that it's gonna be on the agenda no later than noon on Tuesday, the sixteenth. Uh, select board would then vote to submit those back to the planning board for public hearing on January twenty-third. Uh, the first newspaper notice would be, uh, need to be published on February fifth, and uh, also posted in Town Hall and sent to DHCD, NVPC, and the planning boards have a budding towns also on the, the fifth. Second newspaper notice on the twelfth. And then the public, um, Tracy's looking for any special warrant articles by February fifth. Um, they can be a draft form, it doesn't have to be the final language, you know, she understands that this is a, an ongoing process. And then the public hearing, um, would be scheduled for February twenty-first. And the board, um, would then take a vote to recommend the final version of the zoning amendments, um, to uh, the select board on March sixth. So that it could be reviewed, and if there, if there need to be still a few tweaks after that, that's possible, but the public hearing could be continued to the March sixth date and, and the language finalized then, hopefully.
Okay, so this is different from the one you sent out earlier?
Um, the only, the only changes were, um, the uh, submission date of the warrant articles to Tracy, which was, um, the fifth instead of the first.
Okay.
And I had, um, I had a potential range for getting, uh, the warrant posted, but she gave me that as, as, uh, April tenth.
Good. Uh, any questions from anyone? Peter?
Nope.
Woody? No, Scott?
No questions.
Thank you. I don't have any either, Martha, thank you. Um, and next we have the status report on the MBTA Communities' multi-family zoning and wireless communications expansion of the Tower District. Um, do you want to, you want to, uh, uh, Martha and I had had a discussion, uh, earlier about instead of, uh, having our usual, um, Zoom meeting on which would, on the first, um, uh, the first, yeah, I'm sorry.
The first Wednesday.
Wednesday of the month, which would be the third. Um, perhaps, uh, in, in lieu of that, holding a workshop, uh, on these, um, uh, at Town Hall, uh, the conference room, uh, on these, uh, uh, zoning items, so we'd have one regular meeting in January, which would be the seventeenth, or I should say, one meeting for regular business. And then I have our first meeting, the first week in January, uh, as a workshop in person, um, and wanted to get some sense of, uh, if the board was interested in doing that. And we, we would devote the, the workshop would be on these two, uh, warrant articles. Any thoughts on that?
I would support that.
Okay.
Sounds good.
What, what about availability? Um, we'd probably want to do it during the day, maybe on the third or the fourth.
The third's a Tuesday?
Third is Wednesday.
Third is Wednesday.
Are you all available at, uh, uh, one day that week? Or? I mean, I can do either the third or the, well, or the fifth for that matter. We probably wanna stay away from the second, which is the day after New Year's.
Wednesday's fine with me, uh, Thursday, if we did a workshop, I'd prefer the afternoon, afternoon time.
Uh, Pete, how about you?
I could do, uh, uh, either Wednesday or Thursday afternoon.
Okay, Scott?
Uh, Wednesday afternoon would be, would be great for me.
Okay, I can do either of those, Martha, so.
Alright, so it sounds like Wednesday afternoon works for everybody.
Sounds good.
Alright, um.
That'll be in lieu of our regular nightly meeting.
Uh, right.
We won't have a meeting the night of the third.
Could I suggest three o'clock?
Works for me.
Yes.
It's fine with me.
Okay, great. So again, that'll be, uh, in person, uh, at the, uh, oh, Martha, do you need to check on the availability of the room?
I think I had looked previously, um.
I'm pretty sure it was open, I looked.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah, I think it was open as well. Let me just check one thing here.
Oh, and what about our friends from NVPC?
They said that they were available, they have some in-house meetings. So, let's see, it looks like. It looks like it's available, let me just check one other thing. Uh, the only thing that it's booked for is a council on aging meeting at eight thirty AM, so the afternoon is clear.
Good. Alright, so I guess that's, uh, that's settled and. We'll meet on the third at, uh, would we say three o'clock, I think, right?
Three o'clock PM, and Kristen did check with Kayla and Ian at NVPC, and they are. They said they could be available.
Great.
So. We'll make sure to get that set up and reserve the room for, for us.
Okay, I guess we can move on then, uh, next item on the agenda is new business, sixty eight. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, actually, just a couple of updates on the MBTA communities and the wireless communications.
Go ahead.
That's okay. Um, so as you recall, we did have the December sixth meeting, uh, with the select board, and then we had the following Monday, we had a. A public meeting on the MBTA communities at the library, and we had about seventeen residents come. And a good discussion, uh, Ian, Ian and Kayla gave another great presentation and flushed out some of the information. Um, you know, sort of based on questions that came out of the December sixth meeting. Uh, we had a follow-up with them the next day, and. It seems to make sense, uh, we wanted to run this by the board. Um, since, since we were looking at, at, um, you know, three sub-districts in the north and two in the south, and reaction from. Some people, there was some concern about the sub-district on Scotland Road at, at the intersection with Highfield Road. Um, we came away thinking that maybe for now, we should really kind of focus on two in the north and two in the south. So the middle, Middle Road Hanover Route One and the sixty-five Hanover Street. And then in the south, the twelve Kentway and the thirty-four Central Street that we've been talking about. So that's one thing that we wanted to, to run by you all to see how you feel about that. We have more than enough capacity based on our requirement for a hundred and fifty-four units.
Okay. Well, we can certainly discuss this further on the third, but, uh, Pete, uh, any, anything?
I'm comfortable with that direction.
Yeah, yeah, Woody?
Yeah, that would be the A and B, and the A and B in both sections, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then I think. Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna ask Scott if he hadn't had any.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, uh, as am I, good.
And then I think, um, one of the, the things that we'll wanna focus on on the third really is the, the bylaw. And, um, the design guidelines, and one of the benefits, and I think, you know, Ian and Kayla. Touched on this is that having different sub-districts, we can have different guidelines for the different, different sub-districts. So for areas that we feel, um, you know, as long as we make the overall numbers work, we have an overall density of fifteen units per acre, and we get our. Hundred and fifty-four units total. You know, we can, if we wanna see something slightly different on Hanover Street or on Central Street than we do in the other locations. Um, this will be the time to talk about that and see what guidelines could be appropriate.
Okay, do we have, well, we have, uh, a, a draft bylaw we can look at, uh, bylaws we can look at for, uh, the third.
That will be the goal, we have, there, there's a rough draft that they put together with some, um. You know, some, some guidelines which, right now, which are the same for all of the sub-districts we're looking at. And if we can, well, Kayla's looking at the numbers to see what we might do in terms of guidelines for a couple of those sub-districts that might be different from, from. The ones where we might potentially look at more density.
Okay, yeah, cuz I, I think we'll probably wanna focus on the third, on the focus on the, the text of the bylaws itself, along with the, uh, design. The criteria.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
And, and along with this, we still, um, you know. We're aware of the fact, and it's also been pointed out that, um, some, most of the, the parcels that are, the districts we're looking at actually lie in the water supply protection overlay district. And there are requirements for a special permit from the select board. For projects which exceed fifteen percent, um, impervious, so we're working with, uh, Kayla and Ian and also town council on. On that language, because there can't be any discretionary permits required for this, so council has recommended some. For our bylaw. Uh, for the, the MBTA Communities bylaw that would address that, so we'll have that for you as well.
Okay, great.
We're running, we're running that by, um. Uh, housing, housing, HLC is it's called, no, it used to be DHCD, also to get their feedback on that.
Very good.
And then wireless communications, we have had a discussion, um, with Brian Forget, the Triton superintendent, about the possibility of including. The two Triton parcels, um. In an expanded wireless communications district, he discussed it with the school committee, uh, they are, um. They are open to that, so we've received a letter from Brian basically. Confirming that they would be open to having, having the district expanded to those, those two parcels.
Good.
So that would, that would be a, a matter of, of changing, um. Primarily changing the map and probably also description of the district in, in the wireless communications zoning bylaw.
Very good, thank you, Martha, any, anything else before we move on?
No, Kristen, did I miss anything?
Well, this, uh, did you wanna say, mention the, the workshop on the fourth, is it the fourth, Kristen?
Um. No, Martha, so that, that sounded great, thank you for those summaries, and, um, yeah, I definitely would just say. We'll try to do it, we will get you some information in advance of that workshop, um. So maybe next week, if people have time over the, you know, over the holidays to take a look at the bylaw, so when we come together, we can. Have that in good shape to discuss, um. Scott, thank you for the other comment, which was just sharing with the board some upcoming workshops, um, that the citizen planners training. I got what the last C is, I don't know, CPTC is the association that provides, um, training and workshops for. Planning board members and planning staff, I've done a lot of them over the years, and they're really excellent, I mean, they're open to the public, they're all on Zoom now. They're generally an hour workshop, um. And we have, um, support for the planning board members to do that training if anyone's interested. But the first one in January is, um, related to, uh. Long-range planning, comprehensive planning, and in particular, that. Could be interesting, it's not one that I've ever done before, um, but talking about master planning implement, implementation. Which is something we will be, um, you know, now that the master plan has been. Adopted by the town of Newbury, we'll be looking at, um. You know, kicking off what the implementation committee or, um, working group looks like, uh, in twenty twenty-four, so. Sometimes hearing what other towns do can be helpful, um, and thinking about, and then, you know, interpreting what would work best for Newbury, um. So is that one on the January fourth, Scott, I don't have the dates.
I think it's January fourth, the six PM to seven. Uh, seem pretty, uh, reasonable and, uh, uh. Accessible, gonna be a Zoom, so. Uh, and we can all give Martha, uh, the invoices, which is. Thirty-five dollars.
Right, along with your registration and proof of payment, you're all set to go, we'll submit that for reimbursement. And they have, they have some other great ones coming up, uh, site plan review and, and, uh, one on overlay districts and, and a few others, which are, you know. Very relevant to the work that we're doing right now, so as we get those, um, updates from CPTC, we'll make sure that we send them on to you. And encourage you all to attend. If you.
Thank you.
Right.
Thanks for signing up, Scott, that's great.
I already sent to the bill, Martha.
I saw it, thanks.
Alright, are we good to move on to sixty-eight Green Street?
Think so.
So we have the, uh, sixty-eight Green Street, uh, subdivision Farmview Lane, request from Michael DeSantis of Crane Properties for release of lot one. From the restrictive covenant dated February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, recorded at the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds book. Three nine six nine two, page one eighty-one, so, uh, Michael, turn it over to you.
Good evening, it's, uh, Bill Heaney, representing Michael DeSantis. I am, uh, was here a little bit before, earlier for the A and R. Uh, my office is in Beverly at eighty-six Dodge Street, I'm representing Michael DeSantis, he is the manager of Crane Properties LLC tonight. Uh, just a little bit of background on our, our request for you tonight, this is the, uh, known as the sixty-eight Green Street. Uh, definitive subdivision plan that was approved in two thousand and twenty-one and recorded in the spring of two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, Mr. DeSantis in Crane's property purchased this property from the Jackmans, the, um. In. The spring of two thousand and twenty-three, we were before you regarding lot one with a very similar request. Uh, part of the, uh, subdivision approval was some restrictive covenants that are on the property. That, uh, essentially protect the town and ensure that the developer is continuing on and finishing the project. Uh, in, in two thousand and twenty, in March of two thousand and twenty-three, earlier this year. Lot one was reviewed by the board and the restrictive covenants were released on lot one, so that Crane Property could sell the property. We're here again before you tonight for lot, uh, sorry, lot three was approved before. Uh, in March of two thousand and twenty-three, tonight we're here before you with lot one. Um, which is scheduled for sale, and we're looking for the release of the restrictive covenants. Uh, a part of your package, and I can bring up my screen and share it with you if you like to see the covenants of the subdivision plan, uh, it's, it's really at your discretion. Uh, part of your package tonight is a, a letter from, uh, Millennial Engineering. From November of two thousand and twenty-three, where they have reviewed the property and Eric Botman. Uh, reports to the board that, uh, there are some few rather small items to be done on the property. I'll just list them off real quick for you, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Mike DeSantis, who is the manager. Mike, Mike has the firsthand knowledge of what he's actually been doing at the property, so in November, uh. Mr. Botman reports to, to the board that, uh, minor grading remains to be done around the detention basin. The berm along the property line needs to be loomed and seeded. The swale at the base of the berm needs to be completed by adding additional stone. Uh, the crushed stone at the intersection of Farmview Lane and Green Street needs to be installed. In all areas where grass is not growing, need to be reseeded. Um, Mr. DeSantis has, has had some ongoing, uh, work at the property and can, can bring you up to speed, I believe many of these. Items have been remedied, and again, we are looking just for the release of lot one. Um. So that, uh, it actually happens to be a family from town that's purchasing the property, uh, can purchase the property hopefully this week. Um, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or turn it over to Mr. DeSantis to update the board on his efforts.
Yeah, I understand you're suggesting twenty-five hundred dollars be held in escrow, uh, to complete the work, is that correct?
I, I believe that is, yes.
Yeah, that's what Eric had, had, um, recommend, and good evening, everyone, um, happy holidays to everybody, and thanks for having us on. Um, yes, Eric Boterman had suggested if, you know, for, we could place a bond for that work, we have completed the majority of that work. Um, all the grading around the, the detention basin has been completed, um, and was actually loomed or loomed today. Uh, we'd completed the work over the weekend, and obviously, as mostly you know, all that rain that we got, we didn't wanna put the loom down, seeing that it would probably get. Watched away, so we, we finished the grading. Today and, and loomed it, um, the berm along the property line, um, along the left side of lot one. Uh, we had done that several weeks ago, so that has been done for several weeks, um, and we added all the stone that needed to be added in there. Um, we did not loom and seed it, we were gonna wait till the spring to seed all, um, areas that don't have grass currently growing. Uh, cuz obviously, right now, that would just, wouldn't do much, I think the plan is to get some hay down now, just in case we get any stronger. Rains to just kinda keep some of that erosion from happening, um, and we have installed the crushed stone at the intersection of Farmview Lane and Green Street, so. Majority of that work has been done, other than the seeding, so I don't know if, I mean, I guess it's at the discretion of the board, if we need to still place that bond, or if. Uh, you know, the restricted covenants are still in place on lot two, which we are not asking for release of tonight.
Um, my understanding is that P R E B one engineer was recommending a five thousand dollar, um. Uh, cash, well, well, uh, security, I should say.
Okay, that's the first I'm hearing of that, but, and I don't know if that included this work, but.
Yeah, Martha, you have something, Joe, I think.
Uh, yeah, we, we received the letter from him just today, actually.
Okay, and that was to cover these items, or were there more items in the?
Um, yeah, it was to cover those items, I can, um. Um, I can, it will take me a second, but I can pull that up if you'd like me to do that.
Yeah. Um, I guess, but yeah, I mean, I'd love that, and if you could forward that to me, Martha, I'd appreciate that, um. I mean, in lieu of the, in lieu of the bond is, is, are you got, lot two is still under, is still encumbered by the, the restricted covenants, is that? Is that enough? In place of bond, um, considering we're only asking for release of lot one tonight?
Where, where's the work to be done, is it to be done on lot one?
The, the only thing that needs to be seeded and loomed right now is a strip along the left side of lot one. In the area in front of the detention basin that we just graded, um, and that is. Or portion of that is on lot one and a portion of that is on lot two.
Would, would it be helpful if I shared my plan, so that Michael could explain to you where it is, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, well, before we do that, uh, I mean, we've got a letter from your. Uh, from Mr. Uh, Boterman, um, suggesting a holdback is appropriate, and it's just a matter of, um. Uh, the amount, I guess, would be the, well, let me turn to the board members, Pete, you have any thoughts on this?
Um, I'd like to get discussion to continue, I'd like to see that, if we could throw it up on, on the screen, so I can just kinda talk through it.
Alright, yeah, why don't you go ahead?
I can also, I can also read, uh, Joe Sawaka's letter, if that would be helpful.
Yes, please.
So how about if I do that while, um, Bill's pulling the plan up, so, um. It states, I received a request for release of lot one letter by, or of lot one letter by Millennium Engineering Inc. dated November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. of Lot One letter by Millennium Engineering, Inc., dated November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, have conducted site inspections, reviewed the submitted letter, and offer the following comments. The area around the constructed wetland has been graded to direct surface runoff into the basin. However, the area, the entire area will likely remain unstabilized until next spring. Further, the engineer has not commented on nor proposed a solution for the large puddling area that has been observed at the entrance during the last two storm events. I would recommend that a bond amount of five thousand be required to address these issues.
Okay.
You know, and I think part of this is, is related to the issue that we had the site visit about, you know, a while back with storm water that was being directed onto the adjacent property as opposed to into the basin as required, so.
So that work has been done. And I don't, I mean, I, I know I haven't heard anything from those neighbors and I don't know if you have, but there's, in the past two storm events, which have been pretty unique and extraordinary, there's been no water that has gone into their driveway. And the only portion that there is water running is back towards the pond where it's supposed to run. So that, the issue that we had met on site about has been solved. I know we had spoken about the water at the intersection of Farmview Lane and Green Street when we met. We've added what Joe and, and TJ that day from Millennium recommended, which was the, the crushed stone at the end of the driveway and on the left side, if you're looking up Farmview Lane. And we also added to the right side, knowing that there was water puddling there as well. And I could tell you that the amount of puddling in Joe's pictures that he had forwarded over the other day is, is, we've only seen that amount happen in these past two rainstorms. And it has dissipated over time, but you know, we, and then I think Joe also agreed that we, we built it per plan. The, you know, the plan was obviously reviewed and, and approved a while ago before we even bought the, the development, but you know, we're open to that plan being amended and, and further looking into that further. But I think at this point, we haven't been able to get Joe and TJ to meet out there since Joe sent those photos over on Monday.
All right, so can you, go ahead.
Say again?
I was gonna say, if you could scroll down to actually show.
Actually, Bill, let me share, I have a more updated plan that, that actually shows the work we did along the side of Lot One. So if you don't mind me sharing my screen.
Yeah, this is the recorded plan that I had. So I can stop sharing.
Yeah, I can share. So this was a plan that was proposed by Millennium and then approved by Joe. And this is in regards to the meeting we all had on site, myself, Martha, Kristen, Joe and TJ a few months back. You know, this, if you look here, this is current Lot One dwelling that was built. We, there, we were having a lot of runoff issues from the front yard down into the neighbor's driveway and into their backyard. So a swale was proposed here that we've built and is now functioning properly and, and as planned. We also took all the, the majority of the gutters and directed them all into a pipe that now runs directly to the, to the detention basin in the back. So that is all functioning as it should as well. And then that last piece of grading that needed to happen, and just, if you guys aren't seeing my mouse, just let me know. But the last piece of grading that needed to happen was up here in front of the detention basin to prevent water coming off of this driveway to run down into the backyard of Lot One, which is then continuing. So that grading has been done, you know, post this previous storm, all that water is running into the detention basin. You know, the only issue we face now is obviously stabilizing that area, which, you know, temporarily we're gonna put hay down until the spring when we can properly seed it.
And the area that, that needs to be seeded, that is Lot? Which lot?
So it's part, so if you see this line, if you can see that layer that I'm running my mouse across, so everything on this kind of north in this photo, or actually north in general, is Lot Two. And Lot Two's driveway goes back here and Lot Two is in, in the rear. And everything on this side is Lot One. So the seeding needs to happen. Basically, on this portion of Lot One that runs in front of the detention basin and as well as this larger portion to the left of the Lot Two driveway. Also, just this area where we built the berm, because that is all fresh dirt that, that will need to get seeded in the spring as well. And then there's just an area of kinda disturbance that happened with all the machinery getting to the back there to, to build that berm that will also need to be seeded in the spring.
All right, and we're still holding Lot Two under the covenant, right?
Correct.
Okay, so if, if I understand what you're telling, what you're saying is of the five bullet points in the November twenty-second letter, all but the seeding have been resolved?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, the, you know, there is still, and this is something that Martha just brought up too, there, there's still water pooling at the end of Farmview Lane and Green Street. So I think the plan is to, to possibly meet out there again with, with Joe Swarka and TJ or Eric Boterman from Millennium to see what else we can do there. And to see if that was just, obviously, because of the two unique events that we've had in the past couple of weeks. You know, a lot of that water's coming off the Ray Andrews Lot to the right of the street, if you're looking up the street. You know, but there, there, you know, might be a, a way to make a small detention basin there with more stone to, to just collect the water a little better.
Okay, so I guess the question from the board is, are we comfortable in releasing Lot One? And, and if, and if so, do we need any sort of a bond, whether it be twenty-five hundred or five thousand? Pete, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I just need clarification. Martha, was Joe, were Joe comments in, in relation to Lot One? Or to the, say again?
Yes, Lot One.
Okay, then I'm gonna defer to what our consultant has, has given us. So I'm gonna follow his direction.
Okay, Woody, your thoughts?
I agree, Joe, what Joe has to say for Lot One. I would, I would go with that.
Okay, and Scott?
Mike, that's fair.
Yeah, okay. So what I, I'm hearing from the board is that we're willing to release Lot One, but would like to see a five thousand dollar escrow. Nothing would prohibit you from coming back in, in the near future to get that released of all of these issues addressed.
Okay.
Anything further? All right, then would anyone care to make a motion that the board vote to release Lot One on the condition that Crane Properties provide five thousand dollars to be held in escrow as performance guarantee for work remaining to be done, as described in the letter from Eric Boterman, Millennium Engineering, dated November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three?
So moved.
Thank you, Woody. Is there a second? I guess not.
There's a second.
No second? All right.
There's a second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Pete, do you have any, anything you wanted to add?
Nope.
Woody? Any discussion? Scott, any discussion?
I'm good.
All right, then, how do you vote on the motion, Pete?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we'll get you your release and so at least you can go forward with your closing and can show we can work out the, the five thousand dollars at some point.
Perfect. Do you guys want us to just hold that back at closing? And have a, a check sent from the closing proceeds?
I, no, I think we, we'd need something in hand before I can give you the release, where we can, from the release.
So.
Mr. Chairman, if, if, if I may, just logistically, I can, I can arrange to have the five thousand dollars delivered to Martha. When do we think we'd have the Form E decision so that we could proceed forward?
I have to defer to Martha on that. When, when's your closing?
Friday.
Friday, day after tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
They're, they're open to be in for Christmas.
Goodness. Yeah, so the chair needs to come in and, and sign the Form E and have his signature notarized. So is that something?
That means tomorrow, cuz Town, Town Hall is closed on Friday. So I can get in there sometime tomorrow, Martha.
Okay, we're actually, we're actually closed from noon on.
Then I can get there sometime tomorrow before noon, if you can have it ready.
All right, before eleven-thirty would be good, actually.
I mean, does that work for you? Can, can you guys go forward with, with the closing without the Form E?
Uh, makes it a little more difficult.
Yeah. Martha, I'll have my son Seamus there with the funds for you tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, I think that, I mean, the Form E is allowing you to convey the lot. So if you have, don't have that, and I assume you would record it when you're recording the deed. Or.
Yes.
Well, I, I really appreciate that. You guys doing that in the.
Well, wanna see these people get in there for Christmas, I guess, if they can.
I don't know how much Christmasing they're gonna do there with. They'll have, they'll have a new home for Christmas.
Very good.
Well, we appreciate it and happy holidays to everybody.
All right, same to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board Members. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Good night.
So just contact me in the morning, Martha, when you need me. I can come up.
Okay, yeah, anytime. They, they sent the Form E, so I just need to get it printed out and then.
Okay, we'll touch bases.
Okay, yeah, I'll text you.
All right, moving on, liaison reports, Select Board, Martha?
I actually did not attend either the last two Select Board meetings, but there were only, there were a lot of, the last meeting had a lot of business license renewals and liquor licenses and things. I think the one item of interest to the planning board really is the Sunset Club was coming in for entertainment license and requesting music up to eight o'clock P M. The meeting, so that was, that was last, it's moving, the meeting on November twenty-eighth. One item of interest was a, a local historic district study committee update by Lon, Lon Hochmeister. So, but I have not watched the meeting, so I don't know exactly what the update consisted of.
Okay, thanks, Martha. Is that it for Select Board? Yeah, CBA has their regular monthly meeting tomorrow night. They have two continued public hearings. One is for the Foley Bittersweet Lane matter that we're all familiar with. And the other is the Sunset Club Continued Public Hearing on their request for modification of, to add a pavilion and, and other changes to the site from their special permit. And that's it. Conservation, Woody?
We had two meet, we had two meetings. One was a emergency executive. The last one was emergency executive session for concerning Cricket Lane. And the meeting before that, there was nothing pertaining to the planning board. It was mainly subjects and stairs are blue that I recall.
Thanks, Woody. Martha, anything from MVPC?
MVPC, the Commissioners Meeting was held last Thursday. It was pretty, pretty much a a general business meeting. It was followed by an, an open house there, which each of the program staff hosted, hosted everybody to come into their area and kind of show them, show people what's going on and, and have an opportunity to talk with them about projects and eat some good food.
Good.
So.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Planning Director's Report.
Not too much. I did wanna give you all an update on the Governors Academy, as you may recall, they had submitted an as-built plan and were requesting closeout of the, what we originally knew as the Presby, which is now the A C R C, the Coastal Research Educational Building. And after discussing this with Tom Woodruff, they are also, they just submitted an as-built plan for the pedestrian walkway, which goes from Middle Road up to that project. And it seemed to make sense to schedule one site walk to cover both of those projects and then do, do closeout at the same time. So we'll be looking to schedule that right after the holidays. We'll coordinate with Tom and with you all on, on a date and time. And then take that up probably at the, the January seventeenth meeting. If that works.
Thank you. Yeah.
And that's really all I have tonight.
Okay, so the very last item on the agenda are the meeting minutes from November one, November eighth, November thirteenth, and November fifteenth. Have we had an opportunity to review those?
Yes.
Yeah. Any, cuz Scott, you, you weren't on the board then. I think, I think you're eligible to vote on this, so you can abstain it as you see fit on these meeting minutes. Any, any suggestions for changes? Well, how about the November first meeting? Is that satisfactory to everyone? Okay, cuz I'm just gonna ask for a motion to all of these. How about November eighth? Is that good?
Yes.
And November thirteenth?
Yes.
And November fifteenth?
Yes.
Would anyone care to make a motion to approve those meeting minutes from November one, eight, thirteen, and fifteen, twenty twenty-three? Pete, you're, you're muted, but I think I heard a yes.
My apologies. I'd be happy to.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Any discussion? Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
All right, and I vote yes as well, so it's unanimous. All right, that's it. We made it. I care to move to adjourn.
I'll. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Woody. Thank you, Scott. Any discussion? Hearing done. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, everyone.